Call a meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the first Post Falls City Council meeting of the year 2021. And Shannon will note that all council members are present. Council President Wilhelm, Councilor Anthony here in the chambers. We've got Councilor Thorson, Councilor Borders, Councilor Wolf, and Councilor Malloy on Zoom. Are there any, well, let me see, there's no ceremonies, but let me read a couple announcements. January 16th, Saturday, Post Falls sanitation will be providing Christmas tree pickup for the Post Falls residents. Trees must have all the decorations removed and be cut into bundled four-foot lengths or less and placed curbside before 6:00 a.m. City Hall and city business offices will be closed Monday, January 18th, in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Police, fire, and rescue services for life-threatening or in-progress emergencies may be reached by calling 911. The police department will be open for walk-in emergencies. For water department emergencies, call 208-773-3517. And we have a new piece of art in Post Falls. Victor the Bald Eagle landed yesterday on Spokane Street between First and Second Avenue. If you have the opportunity, please drive by and take a look. He is a great addition to our buddy Max the Fish located a few blocks north. And with that, I want to thank Council President Wilhelm, who has been not only involved, but I'm going to say responsible for any art piece that we have in Post Falls, including our beautiful water features at the exit and on-ramp of the freeway. So Linda, your efforts are greatly appreciated, and it adds to the ambiance of Post Falls. And all you do is, again, very much appreciated, and we thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
We have none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflicts, ex parte contacts, or site visits? Seeing none, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the December 15th, 2020, City Council meeting. Item B is payables, December 8th through December 28th, 2020. Item C is additional services authorized for centennial trail bridge maintenance. Item D is drainage improvement waiver request for 1008 North Frederick Street. And item E is Pradera subdivision plat application.
Are there any questions on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the cassette calendar as submitted.
Okay. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf? Need to unmute yourself?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Tonight, we have two public hearings, both vacations. And the first one is a Jacob Run vacation. With that, I will open the public hearing. And who is presenting, Mr. Manley?
Yes. Get my screen shared, see if I can do better than last time. There we go, y'all see it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, John Manley, planning manager here at the City Post Falls, introducing the Jacob's Run Vacation. Case file VACA 62020. The applicant is Mike Fitzgerald of Hallmark Homes. The request is free to review and approve. A requested vacation for the ingress egress provision for lots 1 and 2 of Block 1 in the Jacob's Run subdivision. I'll get into a little bit more clarity of that here in the next slides. The location of this is on the northeast corner of Greens Ferry and Bogie Drive, as you see here in that red hash box. The issue at hand is, in this elliptical circle area, there was a 15-foot easement that was to be provided for lots 1 and 2, on the both east and west side of that easement that went on to Bogie. And there are specific plat conditions that prevented access on to Bogie so that we would ensure access on to those lots. Ultimately, though, what ended up happening is a permit issued and approved that allowed a house to construct a driveway on to Bogie. At the time of framing inspection, it was noticed that something unusual is we had a driveway that was going to a 10-foot multi-use path. It wasn't a five-foot sidewalk as shown here, it was a 10-foot utility path, I mean, a 10-foot multi-use path. So some investigation went in, and that's where, when the plaque came out, it was like, wait a second, we're not supposed to have a driveway going on to Bogie, it's supposed to use this easement. Therefore, staff then notified the applicant, saying, well, we can't, you know, really issue or shouldn't issue, and can't CO until we correct this matter and get this plat recordation modified. Therefore, the applicant then put in the request, saying, well, let's apply for this and hopefully meet their needs. As you've seen in the staff report, exhibit S4, I believe it was, there was an agreement that the applicant knows that any work they did post that, you know, that they bear the burden of that going forward, and that the city wouldn't be whole harmless. But that being said, that's why they're here, looking at getting that vacation so they can get a CO on that house. Staff report did notice that, being a collector's street, typically we don't have driveways going right onto them. The engineering division did look at, though, and look at the request, and found out that the two houses, that the impact would be negligible. There was a condition that, if we have approved, we'd like them to construct appropriate turnarounds that are acceptable to the city with the driveways for each lot, as not to encourage backing on the Bogie and facilitate the ability to go forward with the vehicle. This may include the relocation of the multi-use trail on Bogie. So what that's basically saying is, we'd like to, if needed, move this multi-use path closer to Bogie to create more room for vehicular access and to encourage forward driving on to Bogie for the safety of the people on the multi-use path and the residents on this site. Other condition was to remove the shared drive approach that provides access for the easement. The reason for that, going back to the plat, is if you have a drive approach here for, between lots 1 and 2, let's go ahead and shift that, that way Lot 1 could have its own drive access, Lot 2 could have his, without having any other encoverances going forward. And then there you see they install a new drive approach to that Lot 1, Block 1, Jacob's Run, that's the lot just to the left. These are the agencies that are routed. That pretty much concludes staff's overview of the issues at hand. I believe that they're the applicants represented this year. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for John?
So just one, John, will both houses and their driveways will access Bogie then?
Yeah, as this is being proposed, yes, that's the unresolved data. Both have their individual driveway access on the Bogie. So you basically go from one access shared to two, gain of one drive approach. I think Alan's got a...
Al, you have a question?
Yes, John, I'm a little confused on this. What was, how were these houses supposed to access, how were they supposed to be accessed to begin with?
So, so what you see here in the red line, the easement ironically was identified, and it was denoted on the plans. But the drive approach would have, someone would have driven down this easement, and that garage would have been fronting that drive approach. So the house would have been rotated and facing that rather than facing the Bogie Drive.
So how did we get here? I mean, did, when we issued the permit, did they not have the house sitting in the right direction?
It was unfortunately an oversight on staff's side that didn't see that plat condition. Typically, that's, it gets caught. Of the years I've been here, you know, probably over 4,000 homes, I just honestly, the first time I've seen something like this.
So essentially, we're going to end up with two access driveways on to Bogie versus one little access road?
Right.
Okay, all right, I'm good.
Any other questions, John? Seeing none? John, does the applicant wish to speak?
I believe they do, I'm going to go ahead and stop the sharing.
Well, hi, council, this is Paul Dougherty, I'm the attorney for Hallmark Homes. I don't know if my video is on or not, I don't know that it needs to be.
We don't see it, Paul.
No. That's all right. You know, I think that, I think that John did a good, he did a good job of trying to explain what happened, it really was an oversight. When we found out about it, we contacted the city, tried to work out the most appropriate plan. And me speaking with council, it seemed like this was the best approach. We certainly don't have any issues with the conditions that are opposed, or that would be imposed as far as the four conditions. We think those are reasonable. And it's, it's our position that, you know, we'll, you know, we'll take the blame too. I think the blame goes both ways, but as a practical matter, the best approach to resolve the issue, I think, is what's been proposed, do the vacation. It's a nominal, it's really a nominal change. If you think about it, yeah, now there's two approaches as opposed to one, but according to all the information we have, it really should not be that significant. So we would ask the council to approve with the four conditions.
Thanks, Paul, any questions for Mr. Dougherty? Seeing none, Shannon, is there anyone wishing to testify on this?
We have none.
Paul, I don't assume you have anything to rebut, then?
No.
Close the public hearing, council, it's in your hands. Joe?
Well, like everybody said, this is pretty unfortunate because, you know, the builder should have recognized the easement, and then, of course, staff should have recognized it prior to issuing permits. It's a little bit more, I think, serious than just having two approaches instead of one with the kind of access road. You're going to get people turning off of Bogie going forward and coming back on to Bogie going forward. And even though there's a provision in there to require a turnaround area for the driveways that are going to be there now, there's no guarantee that whoever's using it isn't going to back on to the street or across the multi-use path. So that's unfortunate. That said, there's a lot of older construction, you know, I can think of some near my house, you know, off of Greens Ferry, Third Street, where people are already backing into the streets, so it's not unprecedented, and I don't hear a whole lot of issues with it. So I guess I would ask everybody in the future to use a little more care, but I don't, I don't think we need to make him tear down his house to fix this either.
Thanks, Joe. Any comments? And motion to come forward?
I would move to approve the Jacob Runs vacation with the conditions that have been set forward by staff.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up, a public hearing, is a North Place right-of-way vacation. With that, I will open the public hearing. Mr. Manley, again?
Yes. Once again, John Manley, planning manager here at City Post Falls, North Place vacation. The case file, VACA 42020. The applicant for this is the Post Falls Planning Division. There may be questions, why is Post Falls Planning Division applying for a vacation on this particular matter? As you go through this, I'll show you a subdivision that has already been applied for on this. And as part of that processing of subdivision, there was a discovery of this 20-foot right-of-way, and what are we going to do with it? The applicant for that subdivision didn't really have a need for it, but we, there stirred this question of what are we going to do with it? So, and as we go through this, you'll see that there's three different options, and that's the cleanest way I can explain how the Planning Division got to becoming the applicant of it, because it was a remnant piece that technically is right-of-way the City Post Falls owns, and we need a path forward going on that. And the request is to vacate approximately two acres, 20 feet by the 4,400 feet that you see there. The location you see here in the red line, it's east of Idaho, between Idaho and Greens Ferry, just lying north of the Fieldstone subdivision, south of some undeveloped lands to the north, which will be developed. So, so what are the potential, so looking at this area, staff looked at what, what are the options for this? You know, does this area become an alley? Does this area become a trail? And then staff had concerns that was mentioned in the staff report by installation costs, cost of O&M, cost of policing it. And we also in the staff report talked about potential concerns of safety. I provided this image a little bit to kind of show, it's the best visual representation I could find. Still wasn't ideal for my, my standards, but you see how you have opposing fences. This is a 20-foot alley in Post Falls. This, the longest stretch between Seringa and Idaho would be like a continuous alley between Spokane and Idaho. So if you had no cross-streets, you had a continuous alley, that's what it would look like and feel like a little bit between Seringa for a distance measure. Staff also looked at the users of this area as part of this, and I thought about bringing a Google Earth, but this is the best reproducible record that I can kind of look at, is going from Idaho to Greens Ferry, looking at the people there, how it's going to impact them, and, you know, you can see here that they, the usage of this, people are using an access road that's technically more than likely on the Schneidmaler property in the north. The right-of-way area is to the south of that, and there is really no access road. You see stuff stored along there, you see some RVs, boats, occasionally you see some grass clippings sitting on the other side there. And obviously, it does get used, you can see the traction on that road. You look at these houses, though, you don't see a whole lot of garages that their primary access is off that alley. You see a lot where they can still get access off the front, kind of like this lot that I'm pointing at here. I go to the next slide, going towards Seringa, you don't see, once again, a lot of owl buildings. You do see some drive approaches and some extra parking areas. Moving to the east, you do see a paved drive approach off the alley there. Going east of Seringa, you do see a garage, but the garage has a side driveway that's fronting to that garage. You see some other detached garages that still have access off of Warm Springs Avenue. And that continues over to Thrush, for the most part. To mention the subdivision that kind of spurred this, this is the North Place East subdivision that brought upon this identification of what are we going to do with this 20-foot right-of-way to the south. You can see here in their planned phase, they weren't including this as part of that, they don't necessarily need that for their development. Trying to create a, an image here that kind of showed kind of an angle in red there, that's, that's that hatched narrow corridor that'd be running from Idaho over to Greens Ferry, towards Greens Ferry Elementary. It is to note that it was in the exhibit packet that there was portions of the Fieldstone subdivision that did have the 20-foot easement that was vacated for the benefit of the development to the south. Then you see here in the blue here is, so how are people going to get from the east-west corridors, their pedestrians and the vehiculars, through this area? Well, the Penrose alignment that you see here goes from Hope Avenue, which with that, if it was planned, they could have used the option and used that 20 feet to include as part of a directly east-west hope. What they did is very similar to what you see in Fieldstone, where they have a meandering path of Bogie. So they're going to do a similar meandering path over to North Place, and that'll be the roadway that'll bring individuals to the Greens Ferry Road. Looking at some north-south connectors and looking, how would Fieldstone connect to Penrose? You can see the red line here, how Penrose is being planned to connect Idaho to Greens Ferry, and you've got Seringa and Thrush Drive being the north-south connectors to that. Also here, here's another angle, you can kind of see going from Idaho, you can see the Bogie Drive and Penrose, kind of flowing similar but opposite, bringing individuals to Highway 41. So these will be those east-west routes, and they'll eventually have Seringa going to Prairie, and then it would look very similar probably to a road network that you see in Fieldstone. So staff did look at and look at, so if the vacation is granted, we do want to recognize that there's two acres of land that's there that's being potentially vacated, and that there should be an enhanced trail along Penrose from Idaho to Greens Ferry, including the open space and amenities and potentially periodic benches. These are the agencies that were routed. So in closing, you know, there's options, do we vacate all of it? Do you, how do you vacate it? Do we retain it, acknowledging that there's those potential uses, an alley, a trail? The staff report talked about a little bit more detail of the potential costs. We would like to acknowledge that those costs are probably low on the spectrum, that was just a very rough, rude, simple cost estimate. And, you know, what are the potential safety measures, and are there safety measures or concerns on this? You know, staff says they're excited that there may be some, maybe incur some costs in lighting, patrol. I spoke with Pat Knight, Officer Knight, today, and he concurred that a 20-foot corridor a half mile long without appropriate lighting and lighting could inhibit his ability out there, and is what was a concern. So at this, I'd stand for any questions you have for staff on the proposed vacation.
Any questions for John?
Yeah, John, I got a few. Yeah, John, you explained a little bit why the city is the sponsor of this, but I noticed on the, the notices we sent out to the residents that said the city has received a request to vacate the street right-of-way listed above. So was the request we received from us?
I apologize, it's probably a wording, the request was stumbled upon by processing more or less this subdivision in discussions with the Schneidmaler company, that we had this 20-foot corridor, and if they're not going to use it with Penrose and they don't need it, what are we going to use it for? And then by seeking counsel, it was like, okay, what's the best way of dealing with this? You know, oftentimes, a developer needs that land, and so they're asking the city directly, hey, are you interested in vacating it? Because we need to incorporate it into our design, into our project. And almost always at those times, they're the applicants for that. Fieldstone, when they did it, they were incorporating those into those real lots, and there was a direct nexus to why they were the applicant. Here, on the other hand, we own the property, and what are we going to do with it? Hence why we're the applicant.
Okay, yeah, because I looked at some of the Fieldstone information that was in the packet, and it looked like they were supposed to set aside some of the easement for green space in Section 5, but when I looked through the plot and the pictures of it, the Fieldstone never did set aside that green space, so, so that's a concern of mine. But when I look at this, I see a straight stretch connecting Idaho Street to Greens Ferry, to the schools, I see a perfect walking route potentially for kids going to school. So was that talked about at all with the school district, or?
None, they were notified, I mean, I think for them, I mean, I can't really speak for them, but for me, having Penrose being a lit corridor with a multi-use trail that goes along there, and with the appropriate crossings, that that would be a preferred route, going back to, a preferred route to funnel kids right next to the school.
I just, that's my question, I have a few more comments later, but I'll open it up to somebody else.
Anybody else have questions of John at this point?
I do.
Carrie, go ahead.
So if this property is vacated, what becomes of it?
If it gets vacated, well, that's, you've kind of seen that in a little bit in the staff report, if it gets vacated, you could give, you could go, the recommendation from staff was to give it to the grantor, I mean, they granted the 20 feet back in the day when it was a farm tract, they've had this property for a long time. So when it originally annexed, that's, you know, when it, when it occurred, or when they platted, sorry, when they platted the farm tract, that's when it occurred. You know, it was in the county at the time. So, you know, there's different options, I mean, I think Warren Wilson, the city attorney, could comment, there may be ways to split that up, so maybe some goes to the south, some goes to the north.
Warren looks like he's ready to make a comment.
So, under Idaho code, the idea normally with a vacation is that the property would revert back to the, to the party that dedicated it back when it was originally dedicated. The idea being with right-of-way that it was given to the public for so long as the public had a public use for that property. Once that public use has gone, in theory, the title reverts back to that original property owner. The code does provide, it says that upon vacation, the property will revert to the owner of the adjacent real estate, one half to each side thereof, or as the city council deems, in the best interest of the adjoining properties. So we have some flexibility to adjust that, but I would think that the starting point would be, at least as a starting point, is it would normally go back to the party that dedicated it. Here, in this instance, the 20 feet that was obtained from the, the Fieldstone side has already been granted back to the property owners along that southern boundary.
Carrie, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Al, Joe, Lynn, any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, is, John, is 20 feet wide enough for an alley?
Oh, we have a lot of alleys in Post Falls in the older, older parts of town that are 20 feet wide. It does make for some interesting maneuvering when you do have like an RV or a boat, and you're backing in, a lot of times you've got to angle your fence to get that turning radius. But it can work, acknowledgingly, it's tight, and if we were to do alleys today, we would prefer 25-foot alleys.
Well, I appreciate that one picture, or the several pictures you put up, because it sounded like the, the letters we received, that there were several people using that road, and then the pictures you showed indicated that maybe one person was really using that. I'm not, I'm not a big fan of having a 440-foot alley. Is there anything open for the homeowners if they should want to buy that 20-foot section, to buy that from the person that we would be giving it back to? Could they buy it outright and use it?
Maybe I'll jump it, it's kind of hard because I can't see what John, if John's going to answer or not. In theory, if, if this was vacated back to the property owner to the north, they could work an arrangement and buy it, that's, that would be a, a deal between two private entities at that point, we would not have a role in that discussion, but it's something that they could pursue.
Would we as a city want that, though? No.
I, I will not comment on that, that's not really in my bailiwick. I would point out, while John's got the map up there, one thing to keep in mind is that the, the dirt area where the driving has been occurring is actually on the property owner's to the north's property, is outside of that 20 feet that's city right-of-way. And you can sort of see that in that upper picture.
Yeah, they're not going to get that, that road anyway, they're going to have to make their own new road, right?
They'd have to do something, because that property is, belongs to someone else.
You okay, Al?
Yeah, I would, I guess I'm leaning toward just vacating it back to the Yeah, I would, I guess I'm leaning toward just vacating it back to the people to the north, and if the homeowners along Warm Springs want to work something out with the guy to build a private road there, they can work that out.
Okay. I thought, did I hear another comment, Lynn or Joe?
Yeah.
I think we may have some additional testimony.
Oh, yeah, we do. I'm just, I'm still going back to questions of John at this point. Lynn?
Yeah, there was some reference in some of the material about that there was a road platted there called Grange Road.
That was, I believe, in some of the public comment. The, I'll go back, see if I can, if it's in one of these maps. Grange is to the west of the golf course.
Right.
That's the snap I have. But to the west of the golf course, you have Grange, it kind of lines up with this.
Yep.
This would actually either become Penrose or HOPE. That verdict is still out. HOPE is to the east, and then Penrose is to the west. And so, it's one of those two roads.
Okay. So, the other question I had, John, then, is do you know why there was the vacation of the 20 feet on the south side back in 2004?
Um, well, that one there, I know that there was an inadvertent plat over the right-of-way, and then after that, they had their future phases as part of the PUD, and so they vacated it, you know, to meet the needs of that PUD and design, and they were doing the 10% open space and created the Seringa Park. I didn't read all the minutes of why that vacation was, but I could suppose that would have been the rationale.
Okay, well, I would oppose vacating the thing and giving the property back to those on the south side. I think they've already had adequate.
Okay, Lynn, just a minute, but let's, let's get testimony before we go to council deliberation, Lynn, okay?
Okay, yeah.
Joe, any questions?
I just got a question. John, if you could please go back to the drawing of the proposed development? Just want to make sure I understand what the condition is. So you've got, Penrose is the windy road all the way to the north, right?
Yep.
So the idea is that we vacate the 20 feet all the way to the south, and essentially shift the entire development 20 feet to the south to make room for more pedestrian facilities along Penrose, correct?
You know, I don't know how that is going to materialize. To me, the, this year's an approved subdivision, so how that manifested, the condition saying that they're going to enhance the multi-use trail corridor and the sidewalk corridor, more than likely, that would occur like on the future phases beyond this. I could see this absorbing the lots to the north, absorbing that as extra space.
Okay, so it's not going to provide any extra room for the enhanced pedestrian facilities then, necessarily?
For this, well, you already have a widened track to the north of Penrose. Is it equate to two acres? I don't know. But this right here, they have a large track for the opening, they've got some green space here, there's room where they can put benches along Penrose Avenue here, so they can meet some of those benches, and then we can work with that on the future phase. They've got to come forward potentially with a development agreement, and then that's when those items could be added further east of here. This is about a third mile east of Idaho Road.
Okay, I understand. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, thank you. Steve, one more question.
So, this would probably be for Dave or Brian Myers, if they're on somewhere. Is it all right to ask them a question?
Is it all right at this point, Warren, or is that?
So, I guess if Dave or Brian, this question would be for you. It was mentioned that there could be some maintenance issues for that or a cost. I guess what I'm looking at, are there any grants out there for urban trails like that? Could you see the potential of an urban walking trail, biking trail, two miles long that will connect those two corridors, that corridor between Idaho Street and Greens Ferry?
This is Dave. I can't get my video to work, so you're just going to have to hear my audio.
You've got the perfect face for audio.
Yeah, it's a better, it's an improvement. There are grants with the state parks and recreation, Idaho State Parks and Recreation, Rails to Trails type grants. We have utilized that with the Centennial Trail for the, our silcoating every five years. It was also used to install the section in between 41 and, I guess that would have been Northwest Boulevard at that point. You're competing, you know, statewide, but it's there.
So there is some potential being able to use, apply for that as an urban trail, then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
One more question.
I just have one.
Okay. Al, let me go to Linda, and then I'll come back to you.
Okay, sounds good.
I'm not sure who this, who can answer this question, but if that strip, 4,400 feet long, was made into a trail, there would be no vehicles going up and down the trail. Is that, would that be correct, John, or Dave, or whoever's answering?
Yeah, that was a trail. We would want to restrict vehicular access.
And so, okay, that's fine.
Okay, thanks, Linda. Al?
Okay, I think this question's for John, but in a situation where a homeowner buying a home on Warm Springs that backs up to this piece of property, if they were to have contacted the city and said, what's going on behind my property? What would they have been told? Would they have been told that there was going to be a road there? Would they have been told that future development could mean that somebody's going to have a house right up against their fence?
More than likely, staff would say that going north of it's planned, probably zoned R1, that it'll probably become a R1 subdivision, that we do not know exactly where the roads are going to go, being the fact that you have right-of-way back there, you Hope Avenue could have run east-west, and they could have a road directly behind them, or they could, you know, there may be a vacation, and we may be going down that path and doing a subdivision of some sorts. That's what we would have told them.
Okay. To your knowledge, did anybody that bought a house on Warm Springs come to the city and ask them that question?
I haven't actually, I personally, I'm only one of three planners, but I have never been asked that question for this area. I've had the answer question for other subdivisions, but not Fieldstone.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Shannon, people wishing to testify?
Yes, and I'm going to call their names out because I have them in.
Perfect. Are you going to, are there any in favor?
Yes. Kevin Schneidmiller, you can talk. If you unmute yourself. Kevin Schneidmiller, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Kevin, name for the record, please.
Yes, Kevin Schneidmiller. I reside at 6552 East Octavia Court, Post Falls, Idaho. I'm here representing both the developer, Greenstone Cootney II, and Schneidmiller Brothers, Inc., the landowner of the property adjacent to this right-of-way vacation hearing. I'm speaking in favor of the vacation, and for a few primary reasons, none of which have to do with the land being vacated to the landowner to the north. We do not believe this is a good location for a trail. If, if the property is not vacated, we will be backing up a fence to the property line adjacent to the right-of-way. So you essentially, as Mr. Manley pointed out, you will have a over 4,000-foot corridor that has fences on both sides. We travel all over the United States looking at master plan communities, so we've, we've looked at a lot of them. We have seen these type of situations in some areas, and they are very difficult to police, manage, and maintain. Mr. Manley did a good job of pointing out the need for lighting and so forth, and if it becomes a trail, again, I'm sure the city would, for liability reasons, want to restrict vehicular access, which, you know, I appreciate and understand that some homeowners have been utilizing this. As it was pointed out, as you can see, that field road has been a field road that we use to access the property as far as, as part of our farming operation for the last 50 years. The road itself is clearly, as Mr. Manley's exhibit show, on the Schneidmiller property. We have been good neighbors since Fieldstone was developed and allowing people to utilize that. We've unfortunately also, from time to time, had to put up with grass clippings and garbage and so forth, but we did not raise any issues. We continued to allow people to utilize that. Maybe that was a mistake. My second point is that if it was left as an alley, and we have developed alley product throughout our North Idaho subdivisions, as well as Eastern Washington subdivisions, and 20 feet would be a very minimum situation, and that would be very, very difficult to back boats, camper trailers, and so forth. You would have to keep in mind, at that point, the people buying lots to the north would also have to be allowed access to that alley. So we believe there's a lot of potential for problems in either of those situations. My third point is, Mr. Manley mentioned the trail system on Penrose. I want to point out that we will also be perfecting the extensions of trails along Idaho Street, Seringa, all the way to Prairie, and from Idaho to the eastern boundary of the property along Prairie, as well as additional internal trail system, trails that will connect to the system that I just mentioned.
Kevin, your four minutes is up. Can you wrap it up for us?
Sure. So again, we are in favor of, of the vacation. We believe it's the right approach, and it has nothing to do with the amount of land.
Thanks, Kevin. Shannon, next.
That's all in favor.
Okay.
We have no neutral.
Okay.
And the rest are opposed. Patrick Barclay, please unmute yourself. Patrick Barclay, if you would like to speak, please unmute yourself. Patrick Barclay? Would you like to speak? You need to unmute yourself. We'll move on to the next one.
Let's go to the next one.
Could Dale Gibbey, Gibbony from the satellite room, please come over?
I like that we call it a satellite room.
Sounds pretty official. Welcome, sir. Please give your name for the record, and if you're lucky, we have a clock for you. You've got four minutes.
All right. My name is Dale Gibbony. I live at 1390 East Warm Springs Avenue, and I have sent you before on the city website the petition that I have signed from all the residents along Warm Springs. There's approximately 58 houses there. I have signatures from about 52 people who want to not vacate this property, or now that these other options have been made clear, at least keep it as an alley access for vehicles. I heard mentioned that there was only one person who uses that access back there. Probably more than half the people along Warm Springs of the 58 houses have access back there. I myself don't have an RV or anything that I need access, but I, most of the places have double gates back there. I had some trees trimmed, and the guy that did it had to bring equipment in back there, otherwise it wouldn't have gotten done because they had no access from the front. There's only maybe about two, maybe three houses along Warm Springs that have access to their backyard from the, from the front to bring a vehicle through. So, the options were not given until I got here tonight that I was able to find out on what was going to be done or with this. I'm in favor, and I think I speak for probably most of the people that I've talked to on Warm Springs, that whatever is done with it, keep it as a vehicle access for the people along there, so that they can still have access to move their RVs in and out, heavy equipment that needs to come in for tree trimming or any building that needs to be And I think that's it.
Okay, thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
All right.
Next, Shannon?
Joshua Hensley, please come into the meeting room.
How many do you have, Shannon?
Just the last one.
Welcome, sir. Please come up front. When you get there, give your name for the record, and if you watch your clock, you've got four minutes.
All right. My name's Joshua Hensley. I live at 1360 Warm Springs. I just want to let you guys know that when we purchased our house, we're looking for a four-bedroom upstairs for my kids, and access to put a boat in it, because we wanted to live a proper Idaho lifestyle. So that was half the reason we bought our house. Our real estate agent and the seller's real estate agent both told us that that was an easement road. It was permanent. It was half the reason we bought the house, that it was going to be a permanent access. So my neighbor, Dale, he didn't mention it when he was up here, but I know his real estate people told him the same thing, that all of us were told that someone had talked to the city, and that was an easement road. We were even told that it had a name, that we were very secured that that was going to stay. My neighbor and I also walked to the 50, I think he said 58, I think I counted 52 houses on Warm Springs. I counted 49 out of the 52, signed our little petition saying that we wanted to keep it, that getting rid of it would take value away from our homes. Whoever did the assessment of, most of our houses could still have access to the front. They're only doing it on Google Maps. I've walked it. There are very few houses that could change their access from the back to the front, and whoever did the assessment of one person's driving it is completely wrong. There are a lot of people that drive that road. It would take a lot of utility away from a lot of these houses. Like I said, 49 out of 52 is my count, said they want to keep it because they use it and they see value in it. So those were a couple of points I wanted to bring to you guys. I can't think of too many more. As far as the usage, so there was some talk about an unlit alley, people walking that. I can tell you, people walk it right now, and they're doing just fine. Don't mind seeing them back there, but people walk it just fine, unlit, unpoliced, un-whatevered. So keeping it as an alley for us to drive wouldn't, wouldn't stop people from walking it. They can still use it to walk if it is also for vehicles. It's not any more dangerous just because it's now in an alley for people to walk. And I thought the Schneid, if I'm saying it wrong, Schneidmiller family, I thought they would be against it, but I'm hearing that they're kind of neutral. I wanted to point out that my father's actually looking to purchase a home, and any home that has RV access like that seems to sell at a premium of about $10,000, $15,000 per lot. So keeping it as an alley, they would actually be able to charge more per lot, counting it out. 75 lots, easy, that would be well over a million dollars. So there's a monetary reason, too, as well, as keeping all the neighbors happy because we keep the value in our homes and keep the utility of keeping that access there. Someone mentioned that it'd be hard to put an RV back there. I just parked a 22-foot RV, and I actually walked it out to make sure I could keep within the 20 feet, and I didn't have a problem. The gates are double-wide, so when you swing it open, it's almost half your backyard fence is gone. So it's not an issue parking a big vehicle back there. You can do it easily, and it's not even my RV, so I don't have a lot of practice at it. So keeping that is a big deal for us, and a big deal for all of us. I mean, 49 out of 52 is what I counted that I got signatures from. So, you guys taking away, it would actually be a pretty big deal for everyone on this side. All right, I'll yield my time. Thank you.
I got just a quick question.
Please.
Just a quick question. So you walked that quite a bit. Do most of the homes have a gate access to that section?
I would say there's probably- I would say there's probably four or five that don't.
Okay.
Out of the 50 homes that do, or out of the 50 homes that are on there.
So they access it to their backyard?
Yes, that is the only access for all, but I want to say two also have a fence in the front, and there's maybe a handful that's even possible. There might physically from Google Earth look like there's enough room, but there's the, I forget what you call them, the big ditch for snow, that even if there's enough room for the house, you can't actually park a vehicle just because of the.
Swale.
Thank you. So it's just not possible. My house especially, my neighbor, all my neighbors' houses, I mean, there's only a small few that could change to have access to the front. That assessment was completely wrong, that half of us could just go to the front. It's not possible.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Time's up. Shannon, anyone else?
We have none.
John, you're the applicant, city's applicant, you care to rebut?
I got the city, community director Bob Seale in here with me. So not a whole lot, I just wanted to point out that the, as it was cited in the aerial that the road is being used at predominantly is not on within the 20 feet. So even though they said that he did stake it out, you could do that within 20 feet, most of that road use is outside that 20-foot easement. I may share the screen again here to point out something. Is, it's possible there's a power pole right here. So if they go and exercise this, this power pole may need to be relocated if it was utilized as an alley and retained. And then the other thing is in the staff report, we did identify as potentially maybe these individuals in Schneidmiller would like to work together, are getting an LID to improve this, because an LID might be an option. It may not get the city out of long-term O and M of it, but it may get it constructed. So that's pretty much all, that additional information that staff's wanting to present.
Okay. Thanks, John.
John, one quick question for you. If, if we did abandon this easement, would it end up being fence to fence along there then? The backyard?
Once again, I want to make corrections. Not an easement, it's a right-of-way.
The right-of-way, if we did abandon the right-of-way then, would it be fence to fence?
If you did the full 20, then I believe that there'd be an interest, yeah, fence to fence.
There would be a two-foot gap.
Backyard.
Okay. Lynn?
Um, yeah, John, I'm looking at the staff report right now, and if an alleyway were to be put there, and would the, would the city be paving that alleyway and the taxpayers be paying for that alleyway? I, I guess I, I guess I just don't quite understand. I, I don't, I don't understand that part of this.
Yeah, so, you know, if you retain it for an alley, and that's the direction, then who's going to pay for it? That becomes, you know, the elephant in the room. You know, you either, A, the general tax base for City Post Falls would have to pay for the improvements for that through the general fund, or there'd have to be some other creative ways through maybe an LID and go that route.
But so am I right to be under the impression that regardless of what happens, it is not staying the way it is?
Yeah, no matter what, the road portion's going to go away, and if you keep it, the fence is going to go right around the left side of this red highlighted area, and you're going to be stuck with this narrow corridor where there is no roadways on that portion. I don't have, go to these. You can see a lot of this path. There is no road, and nobody's even traveling through that portion that's going to be retained. Completely unimproved field.
And so there was an estimated cost, I can't talk to him right now, right? There was an estimated cost to do a half a mile in trail for $185,000, and then a maintenance cost of $1,250 a year, and then for chip seal for five years, something around $8,500. And so I would kind of assume that a trail and an alley is going to be about the same price to asphalt. Am I, am I going along the right path here?
No, I think we identified in that that that's a very minimalistic, that's just to get the dart thrown in the right direction. That was only one foot of gravel on each side, and it's a 10-foot. If we go alley, now we're looking at 15 feet. You know, the pros and cons between a trail, trail's 10 feet of asphalt, but then you have all landscaping, lighting, and the other things that'll go with the trail, those costs. With the alley, you're going to go 15 feet, not 10, and you'd end up with about two and a half feet of gravel shoulders on both. So that, that was very, that was a low estimate.
And so I just, I guess that I, what I'm trying to get to is the feasibility of that property, so regardless, it's not going to stay the way it is. So just so that the people who are using the right-of-way right now understand that regardless of what happens here today, that it is not going to remain the same access as they are using today. Is that fair to say?
More or less, that is true.
Because the developer on the north side intends to develop right to the property line, and the way it appears in that map right there, it appears that the people using the right-of-way are actually not, they may be parking in the right-of-way to the north of that picture that you're showing right there, but they're not driving on that per se. They're driving on the property owner, the property owner's property to the north.
Correct. You can see that here with that, that road, that how it, it's completely off that 20-foot. It's, you know, it's, it's just outside that 20 feet. And there's a power pole I referenced right there that looks like it's right in the middle of the 20 feet.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Carrie, Joe, Al, Lynn, before I close the public hearing, do you have any questions of Mr. Manley on his rebuttal?
I, I do.
Go ahead, Carrie.
I, and I, I think that Linda had the same point that I did. So I might have had my question answered already, but you can see on this users of the area graphic that, and there, you're seeing the one RV that's parked on that. I don't know how, if there were fences, as Mr. Schneidmiller mentioned, if there were fences on homes at the other side, you certainly wouldn't be able to turn anything around, turn something into a driveway if there were fences on the other side because of the use of the road to the north that isn't a road, but that, that part of it. So, yeah, I, I just wanted that clarified, like Linda said, and John answered for her, that no matter what the use is, whether it's a trail or not, their, their access through those back gates is not likely to continue.
Okay. Thank you. Al, Joe, Lynn, you okay? Hearing, hearing no additional comments, I will close the public hearing. Who'd like to lead us off? Mr. Malloy.
This is one of those that just kind of stinks all around. The, the, the part that always frustrates me, this has come up a few times before on various issues, is real estate agents or developers kind of making promises that don't exist. A right-of-way of 20 feet is never going to equal a road. And so if the homebuyers were told there was going to be a road back there, there's just no way that's going to happen. So that's misinformation, and I feel really, really bad for the homeowners that were told that. On the flip side of that issue, is those 52 houses have had the benefit for however many years of property that, use of property that isn't theirs at no cost. So you've got the road that belongs to the Schneidmillers, they've had use of for no cost, and then there's the right-of-way that is the property of the taxpayers that they've had use of for no cost. No, they haven't had to pay taxes on that, they haven't had to maintain anything. So, yeah, good, good for them, but unfortunately, sometimes all good things must come to an end. The idea of public land is for, is for the public benefit, and if we turn that into an alley, now that's not for the benefit of the, I don't know what we're up to now, 40-ish thousand residents of Post Falls, that's to the benefit of 52 houses. I don't think that's a good use of public land because everybody has to pay for a benefit for those 52. So as much as I feel for those homeowners and what they were told back when they bought those houses, that's not, I hate to sound blunt, but that's not the problem of the other 40,000 people that would have to pay to build and maintain something that would be solely for their benefit. So for that purpose, I don't think it's something I want to commit the taxpayers to. I'm a taxpayer, I don't want to commit to it, to, to go down that, that road, so to speak, pave a 20-foot alley, provide whatever utilities need to be moved, whatever utilities need to be moved, and maintain it so 50 families can park an RV. That's, I, I don't, I don't think, that's not something I want to saddle the entire city with.
Thanks, Joe. Carrie?
I'm, I'm good. I, I agree with Joe.
Okay.
On that, it's, it's unfortunate, but it's going to change. There's, there's no option that keeps this the same for all of those homeowners.
Okay. Lynn?
I just think that, one, an alley should be out of the question because as soon as we grant something like that, and I can show you different places in Post Falls today, but people are going to park their vehicles along the sides of the alleyway that chokes it down right away, and it's going to make life miserable out there. And if it's not a paved access area, then they continue to dump, like Kevin said, their garbage and what have you over the fence onto the right-of-way. So I think it's a maintenance nightmare as well. Aside from that, I still think those 52 homeowners have received previously, back in 2004, 20 feet to that, from the south side of this right-of-way, to their benefit as well. So they, they could have had a fence line back and still provided their own accesses in. So I'm supportive of, of the vacation and no alleyway or, or use back there.
Thanks, Lynn. Al?
You know, the only thing I would add, and I thought Joe did a great job of summing it up, I agree with what everybody's saying. One thing I would encourage people in the future, that when you buy a home and there's not something already established, either, you know, view-wise or behind your property, check with the city. That's why I asked the question of, John, what would the city have told you? I mean, a realtor's trying to sell a piece of property, he doesn't really know. The city's there, we're, we're open to answer questions, and I feel bad when people get misinformation, but if they had have gone to the source, the city would have told them that more than likely there was going to be a house right behind them and not a, not a road or an alleyway or whatever. A trail won't work. I don't, I just don't see how any of this would work. I would, I would move to.
A minute, Al, we got a couple more comments. Let me finish, and I'll come back to you, okay?
All right. No problem.
Okay, well, I think I'm in the minority on this one, and I don't look at it as an alley, or, but I do look at it as a potential for a trail between Greens Ferry and Idaho Street. And I'm looking, tonight later, we're holding on to a little tiny sliver of land on the end of Cecil for future use, but yet we're giving up close to two acres and a straight stretch of trail tonight. And I could just see that down the line, 10, 10 years from now, that it would be a benefit to the city, and I'm against giving up that much right-of-way.
Thanks, Linda. Easement.
I, I am going to be in favor of approving the North Place right-of-way vacation, the same as, I think Joe made a very good point. I do feel bad for the people that back up to this right-of-way, and if they were told by a real estate person that that was always going to be there, I, I feel very bad for you for not calling the city and double checking, but I'm going to be in favor.
All the way in, just real quickly, before we go to Al for a motion, and, and again, I, I understand the property owners' concerns and needs, wants, but it's been stated, you know, they've had access to this, they've gained 20 feet when the southern part of that was vacated, and I have a difficult time when the property was, is, you know, would be, need to be vacated, the property to the north, have a difficult time saying, you know, we're going to take that away from you too, to give to the homeowners on the south. I, you know, if they wanted to buy it, I would, you know, say, work out a deal with the owners of the property on the north to buy the piece of property that you've been using. But again, and has been stated, the city doesn't need that property, and I would not be supportive of using city dollars to improve it for any purpose at this point. So that, that would just be my position. But Al, with that, it will go to you. You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would move that we vacate, we approve the, the vacation. I don't have the number in front of me, I'm sorry. The North Place right-of-way vacation.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Nay.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. And I'd like to thank Shannon, staff, for arranging this. I think the first time we've had public hearings where we've brought people in, so it worked well. Thank you. Next item on the agenda tonight is unfinished business, returning ordinances, and we have one which is license to use real property on Cecil Road.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
So this, this previously became, came before council on a vacation application.
Just, just in case people know, Field Harrington, one of our city attorneys. Go ahead.
Thank you. So this, this matter originally was presented to council on December 1st as a vacation application. It was subsequently denied, but council directed staff to basically work out a license agreement with the adjoining property owner so that they could improve the property and create some extra parking and storage. And so what is before you is, is that license agreement, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Anyone have questions of Mr. Harrington? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the license to use the real property on Cecil Road.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Field. Next item on the agenda tonight under new business is a resolution to establish authorized agents for the purpose of trespass or malicious injury to property. And I see Teresa Benner, human rights, or human resources popped in. Teresa, are you presenting on this one, or?
Uh, no, I'm not.
Well, I gave you the opportunity. It looks like you're going to do it again.
I'll pass on this.
Teresa in a cameo appearance.
I've got this one as well.
Okay, Field, okay.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is a, basically it's an update to an executive order that Mayor Larkin did back in 2009, authorizing certain staff members to trespass unruly persons from city properties. The proposed draft and resolution is intended to basically be an update to that order. It is similar to what other cities have done. Basically, it designates certain department heads the ability to trespass people for harassing, loitering, spray painting, those kind of malicious injury to property, that sort of thing.
Field, explain trespassing.
Any questions?
Explain trespass. What, so we authorize certain people to trespass. What does that mean?
So trespass is governed by Idaho code. Basically, it removes them from, from the property, authorizes the removal for a period of 12 months. During that time, they do have an ability to, if they do have some sort of city business, they they can petition to, to utilize and, and, and come back on city property for specific uses. But they would have to contact either the chief of police or the city staff member who issued that notice of trespass. And if they did come back on city property being trespassed without permission, then they could be cited under that Idaho Code section.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, Field? Assume we need a motion on that?
I'd move to approve the resolution to establish authorized agents for the purpose of trespass and malicious injury to property.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Field. I'm going to take a wild guess, Ms. Benner, that you're going to present COVID leave change, twenty-twenty-one.
Yes, indeed. You would not want me presenting what Field just did.
I gave you the opportunity, though.
So, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, Teresa Benner, Human Resources Department. Tonight, I have a new but temporary policy that I would like to discuss with you regarding some proposed leave procedures in the aftermath of the two thousand and twenty Family First Coronavirus Response Act, otherwise known as FACRA, which ended last Thursday, December thirty-first. FACRA was mandated by an executive order in the early days of the COVID-nineteen outbreak and afforded expanded paid leave policies to most employees affected directly or indirectly by the virus, primarily an eighty-hour leave that was required to be paid by the employer for pretty much everybody, any, any of our employees, including our seasonal and, and part-time individuals. The broad intent of the policy was to afford a safety net for employees or family members that became ill or were required to quarantine under federal, state, or local orders. While the policy was oftentimes confusing and changed on a dime, it did have the result of protecting millions of individuals that might have otherwise experienced financial devastation had they not been able to make use of this critical program. As a local agency, we didn't have any input regarding FACRA. And while I wasn't a big fan of some of the provisions, we are now dealing with higher numbers of positive cases here in our county than in those early days of COVID. And there are some valid considerations in offering a revised leave policy that we can better manage ourselves over the next few months while people are getting vaccinated and until the positive cases have peaked and we see a reduction in those daily numbers. So, this is an interactive conversation, and I respectfully invite your suggestions and input while asking that laying aside the flaws of FACRA, we provide a new policy that provides a sensible approach in keeping our workforce and the community safe while we navigate the next few weeks, possibly months, and then revisit the issue at an appropriate time with the intent of allowing the policy to sunset when we feel that employees and community are adequately protected and are in a little bit more stable position. So, if you've already read through the policy in your packet, you'll know that major changes to the current policy are basically allowing personal leave to be taken in a different order, specifically from an existing catastrophic bank that we already have in place from our current policy, which is personally accrued by the employee as they max out their paid time off, and providing an additional sixty-four hours for an employee's COVID-related illness, less any time that was previously used in two thousand and twenty, as well as allowing employees to go into a negative PTO balance up to forty hours if necessary for an employee's COVID-related illness. And these last two items would be the major changes. We currently have been allowing employees to draw from their catastrophic account if they become ill after they've used up their eighty hours per the executive order. But we would actually flip so that the catastrophic account would be hit first before going to any other hours available to them. So, do, does anybody have any questions or comments at this point?
Teresa, I have one.
Yes.
In the many months that this virus and pandemic have affected us, what is your overall opinion on how city staff has handled this? Is it, has it been handled in what you would consider an appropriate way? Or have you seen people taking advantage of the system?
There have been a few people that have taken advantage of this. I, I would say that we had some individuals in, in those part-time and seasonal capacities, maybe their first season with the city. And there were a few individuals that, given eighty hours of paid leave, you know, that, for them, it was basically a two-week vacation. We would eliminate that moving forward if this policy were adopted.
So, that was my point. You feel this would give you a better handle on that?
Oh, yes. We, we would be able to manage this. We didn't have a lot of say before. We couldn't ask for documentation. We couldn't, you know, there, our hands were tied in a lot of different ways with this that, that I believe, moving forward, we would have the ability to manage it so much better.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf, you have a question?
I did. Teresa, I think you've done a great job with this, and I, I like the improvement to the, the policy. My concern is that the feds are just going to step in and just redo FACRA, or even make it worse. And if they do, does that just kick our policy to the curb?
If they come forward with something that they mandate, we don't, we don't have a lot of opportunity to manage it ourselves, obviously. But I think that what, what we have in place with this policy is the ability to put some structure around it that was not in place before. And, you know, do we have to do what the feds say? Of course we do. But I think that we also have opportunities to make this something that, that is manageable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Councilor Wolf, the federal government within the stimulus package actually allowed for credits on payroll to the businesses that qualify, government does not qualify, to allow them to continue this program through the end of March of two thousand and twenty-one. Again, the city doesn't qualify for this, but most of the general private businesses are being allowed through the stimulus package for payroll credits through the old Family First Act through the end of March thirty-first. So, it's doubtful the federal government will make any changes prior to that date.
And I would say that if you, if you follow that, you have to follow it to the letter. But again, as Shelley said, we don't have the ability to get those tax credits as a public agency.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Joe?
Thank you. My cell phone muted here. First of all, I like the policy. I think, as everybody's noted, a vast improvement over what's been going on with the federal requirements. My other question, and I guess another thing I like about it too, is that it's, it's still using time that, that employees have accrued for the most part. So, you know, that's, that's in their account, so to speak. So, it's not like we're giving them anything they didn't earn. So, I appreciate that about it. The question I have is, is the ability to work from home. What, what percentage roughly of the Post Falls City employees have the ability to work from home? And, because we've had, the company I work with, you know, a lot of people that tested positive and had to quarantine for a couple of weeks, but didn't want to give up any of their accrued time, just work from home. Is there, is there an option for most people to do that at the city, or no?
Yes. We have a large number of individuals that are working from home for a variety of reasons. Some, you know, taking care of their children, some are, are getting ill, taking care of family members. But for those that are actually contracting COVID themselves, in a lot of cases, fortunately, they're relatively mild cases, so they're still able to work from home. So, we don't have to dive into, dive into those extra hours.
Right. Okay, I wasn't sure if there was a, a majority or only a few, but I'm glad to hear that those who have really mild cases or no symptoms still have that option. So, that was my question.
Thank you. We have a motion to come forward.
I would move to approve the COVID leave, leave changes, twenty-twenty-one.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Teresa.
Thank you.
Next up, administrative staff reports a legislative update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, we'll keep this pretty short. I think most of the information that you would want to know is included in the packet. The actual drafts of the property tax legislation were included in the packet. And then in my memo, I provided a brief summary. So, the three main topics that we're looking at, not to say this isn't going to expand later, because once the legislature gets into session, there'll be additional things coming forward. But the main three things that we were looking at is impact fees for school facilities. It does look like schools in the southern part of the state, Warren had sent me an email. Says the Idaho School Boards say it's time for lawmakers to approve impact fees for schools to fund growth. So, it looks like they have support that they have not had in the past from the school boards. This will come forward. It's, the, the impact to us would be the collection of the impact fees. And also development, as they're looking at building, there would be additional costs associated if schools were allowed to have impact fees. It gets a little complicated because school district boundaries don't always follow exactly with city boundaries. And so, you have, let's say, the Post Falls School District would have the county and the city of Post Falls both collecting those impact fees as building permits were issued. The collective bargaining is an item that came forward during the AIC legislative meeting. Most of the Idaho cities that were on that call were not in favor of this. Folks who have collective bargaining are not in favor of this. I have spoken to at least one of our council members who's experienced this, is not in favor of this. I've also spoken to our chief of police, who is not in favor of the collective bargaining. It is being paid for and sponsored by some agency, which we believe is the Sheriff's Association, I think, is who's paying for the lobbyists to sponsor this legislation. So, we'll continue to monitor this, and likely there'll be letters issued from the city objecting to collective bargaining as a, as a legislative action. The most concerning to us is the three drafts of legislation that came out of the Property Tax Interim Committee. And I can read you kind of the last part of my paragraph on this, that I think kind of summarizes it best. It says, "All three pieces of the tax legislation are draconian and do not address the real issue that the committee has put in place to solve. The increase in residential property taxes, which is a result of a shift in taxes from property owners seeing a significantly higher valuation increase versus other taxpayers seeing a small valuation increase. In general, residential is seeing a larger percentage increase, and commercial is only seeing a single-digit increases in market values annually. This primarily creates a shift from commercial to residential." When I presented the data to you last year, I said that there's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in city taxes that shifted from commercial to residential over the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen tax year. I just about four-thirty finished the nineteen to twenty tax year. That's about three hundred and fifty thousand again. I think it was three hundred and fifty-six thousand. Full taxing district, it's one point three million in taxes that shifted from commercial industrial over to residential between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty. The city staff is still working to get to the roof, the root of the tax shift addressed. And the window dressing that is written in these three bills is, that honestly create more economic harm than good to both the local taxing districts and to their constituents. So, it may look like they're trying to do something, but the tax shift will continue to occur. This year in Cootney County, I think only possibly the highway district, I haven't verified that, was the only one that took a three percent with the public safety offering that the governor had. Cootney County, City of Post Falls, and the fire district agreed to not take a three percent. So, there were no tax increases from the main taxing districts. And you still saw a shift of one point three million dollars come from industrial, commercial, over to the residential side. Total taxes collected when I ran it, and this is, I haven't verified the numbers. There was only an eighty-seven thousand dollar increase in total taxes collected from nineteen to twenty. With that, public safety, I believe that the fire district took, took a reduction in taxes collected for twenty, which will then jump back up in twenty-one. But that, what we saw, basically, still a tax shift even without hardly any additional taxes collected from twenty to, from nineteen to twenty. The, the restrictions on the reserves and the fund balance, that we're being told likely will not happen. And this year, they're going to go back and take another look at that. Some of what they're trying to do there is concerning. They want cities to go into debt where in the past, I should say, local taxing districts, because it's not just cities, where in the past, they have had the ability to save up for projects. They did almost immediately exclude utilities from that, which is interesting, why you would want to operate utilities different than your general fund. They basically both, one's paid by rates and one's paid by taxes, but your constituents are usually the same folks. And if it's good for one, it should be good for the other. They seem to understand on the utility side, which is a business fund versus a general fund, that you would want to save for those projects. And then on the reporting side, it's very cumbersome. That's all I'll say. I'm, I'm not saying that we're not willing to do some reporting and, and add transparency. Most cities that are of any size actually do their own transparency. A lot of them are using Open Gov and different programs, so you can go out and look at budgets and things online. All of our information's available online on our website. Adding that layer to the state is fine. Right now, we do currently report all that to the state. I don't believe anyone can actually find the information on the state's website at this time, because it's not set up for that. But it is all reported to the state under the current system. It's reported under our CAFR program, and the information's drawn directly from there. But having that maybe in a format that so everybody's looks identical would be fine. It's more the way they've set up this legislation at this time, it's really cumbersome, and will take probably special software. Hopefully, the state would pay for that, if that's what they want, rather than the cities or the local taxing districts having to pay for that software. But right now, it's, it's very cumbersome, is the, and I've, and I've seen that not just for myself, but in looking at the information coming out of the Association of Idaho Cities and Association of Idaho Counties, it's the same exact language. It's cumbersome and does not seem feasible for what they're looking to obtain.
The concern I have with the legislation that is being proposed, as Shelley said, is we're facing this tax shift. And this is what we've explained to legislators, we've met with at least one of the local legislators, and explained this to them, and yet they're coming up with these other methods of limiting your reserve. And, and basically, as I saw some letters that were sent today, trying to penalize you for being good stewards of the money and saving up for projects that you know are coming down the road. And it, it just made little sense to me, and it, it really states to me that those involved don't have an idea on how the city budgets work and what we do as a city. And, and again, let the locals, let the locals, elected officials, you know, set the rules and, and work, work the, with the citizens to protect them. We're not trying to take advantage of anyone, and it's kind of contrary to what the state legislators are saying.
And I think we agree the system is broken, but the way they're trying to fix it isn't going to fix the problem, so.
Steve?
Shelley, I just got a question. On the collection of the impact fees for the school districts, if that goes through, would that have much of an impact on staff time figuring out those fees and collecting? And with that amount, then, do we spend on staff time be reimbursable from the?
It would depend upon the legislation and how it's proposed.
Under that, so.
One time, I know that when the county was approved for impact fees, I think there was some, some recovery that we could receive, but I don't remember the amount. It's not a huge impact on us, once we get it set up in the system. There is an issue of how we're going to issue them checks, things like that, but I wouldn't say it's a major impact on us. It's more of a minor impact.
More of an accounting issue?
Yes.
Okay. Al?
Shelley, I appreciate the information. What is, if anything, is there that we can do to move this in a better direction?
Continue to communicate with our legislator, legislators, and we do that through the Public Policy Committee that the chambers host, and also through the Association of Idaho Cities and the Association of Idaho Counties. So, what we'll be doing, Warren and John and I will be working on letters that will have the mayor sign and will share with the council, and continue to, if we have any meetings, it's really hard in this COVID world to have legitimate meetings where you can actually reach out and talk to folks. Typically, we would recommend having our legislators meet in a group, and all of us, and council, mayor, everybody attend and talk to them individually. In this world, probably the Public Policy Committee meeting, as they host those, which are usually via telephone and probably via Zoom now, I would encourage council members to attend those meetings if possible and have input there and talk to the legislators. Also, just educating our developers and builders and getting their support. So, we want to have those folks reaching out to the legislators also and talking to them and letting them know what works and doesn't work. We'll produce another, included in the packet is the property tax sheet. I was working on that earlier. So, we'll produce another one of these, talking about the statistics here in Post Falls. So, for example, this year, the magic number is nine point seven one percent. If you received a market value increase of larger than that, you saw a property tax increase. If you saw an increase less than that, then you saw a property tax decrease. I did actually run all of our, our council members. tax decrease. I did actually run all of our council members and myself to see where everybody kind of fell on that. So I know what happened to each of you, and there was one of you that got hit pretty hard this year. So I think a 76% market value increase on their property. So the number right now, like I said, is 9.71%. And so I'm running what the percentages are for that and what that difference is between the different properties. So I don't have all that data put together yet, but I'll have it here in the next couple of weeks, and we'll have another one of these produced and sent out to everyone. We also share that with, I can tell you, the Jacklins have been good supporters of us on this and willing to help us fight this battle. One of the things that they get concerned with is if we cap new growth and the ability for taxing agencies to take new growth, those properties that haven't been annexed or developed yet, as council members and commission members, you'd have the county commissioners and the city council members looking at whether or not they would want to do annexation of those properties. If you can't access the new growth of that property, it makes it fairly untenable to actually service those new growth areas. I think I overanswered your question, but.
Perfect.
You did a great job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Shelley.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is citizens' issues. Shannon, anyone signed up to speak?
We have none.
Mayor and council comments. Well, today was the first of what I think are going to be weekly conference calls with, on the COVID. I know Council President Wilhelm was on the call, but just some of the basic information that they provided, this is with the governor's office. To date, as of today, 20,843 vaccines had been issued. Vaccines come in on Tuesdays and then are administered throughout the week. Long-term care facilities have, they've co-opted with federal pharmacy partnership, Walgreen and CVS, and that started on yesterday, on the 4th, for the long-term care. I know at Garden Plaza, I believe they're scheduled to start giving shots tomorrow. The vaccines go directly to enrolled advisors, and there are currently 300 in the state, and they are adding more. The allocation numbers come from the federal government, and my concern, when I sent a letter down to governor's office a week or so ago, was, you know, we heard that, I think it was 580-some thousand vaccines were supposed to be arriving, and we've received only a small fraction of that. And they said that number changes, but it comes from the federal government. Changes, the numbers change very often. Right now, the initial doses received are about 20,000 a week in the state, and the second dose, which will be another 20,000, are also being received and held for the second shot. The state has received 83,475 doses to date, and again, they'll be receiving another 20,000 for the first and 20,000 for the second injections in the weeks to come. And for more information, you can go to coronavirus.idaho.gov, where they break down, they've got a spreadsheet where they will break down, or not a spreadsheet, but a chart, where they break down the different phases or stages where people can receive the vaccine, 1A, 1B, 1C, et cetera. And of course, hospital and medical professionals are in that first phase. So any questions, coronavirus.idaho.gov. Counsel comments. Seeing none. We do need an executive tonight?
We do.
How long?
Two minutes?
Twenty minutes?
I've moved to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061F to communicate with legal counsel for a public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but intimately likely to be litigated, that no action will be taken in this session, and that it will last approximately 20 minutes.
Motion second for the discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, and council has the number to call back in for the executive session?
Yep.
That will enter executive session. Call the meeting back to order. Are there any motions to come forward?
To adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Good night.